Do you guys mind if we just take a, a quick second? Sir, did you come in for something specific?
Yes.
Okay.
Dean, or four forty, Dean.
Oh, I haven't met you yet before, so my apologies.
No worries.
All right, Debbie, if I could just grab you for a minute.
Certainly can.
Wow, this is totally different.
What's the new numbers? I haven't looked at that yet.
It must be being generated off of that new software.
It is, and, um, oh.
It looks totally different.
It says calculations as of one thirty-one twenty twenty-two.
Oh. So maybe this is just a sample.
Yeah.
For us to start getting familiar with it.
And you'll see that once you get past the payroll portion of it, that the other part on, no, in the folder say I just gave.
Oh, oh.
That there's some changes there too. And it's just a change in the look.
Oh. Let's take a quick look. I don't have time to look at it now.
And it looks like there's a lot of flexibility on how the reports are formatted, so if somebody wants something different, Mandy says that she can go ahead and do that.
Oh, I guess.
Wait, did we go the right way when we got, uh?
You think so?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Debbie. She's the one who requested it.
Yeah, that's actually a nice letter about the Queen Center.
Yeah. That, that belongs on our warrant article discussion.
Yep.
Very simple. Satisfy all parties. Sounds like, I don't know if that's possible, to satisfy all parties. I'm finding that to be a, maybe a little bit of a pipe dream, but.
Nothing. Nothing would be.
I do so for equally dissatisfied. Usually the fairest.
Oh, boy. Yeah, a lot of times that is a, sometimes you can have all parties satisfied. That's satisfying when that can happen.
Yeah, it's not realistic to expect it.
No.
Take a thirty years contract into a shape with Bell Atlantic, I think that happened once, maybe?
What was that with?
Bell Atlantic, with all of their customers. Has to negotiate their contracts a lot.
Oh.
I was at Computer Technology Services, uh, not even.
Oh, yeah? For, for thirty years?
Yep. Yeah, when it became, um, five different companies. Actually, it was Xerox for a little while, then it became Decision One, the longest period. Why does Phil Service Organization in the country independent?
That's impressive to be working with the same company for thirty years. Not many, not many people do that.
They don't have much.
We do not.
That's a shame.
Yeah, it is. The company I worked for, I was there for forty, and it was just, it was unheard of. People were just switching out back and forth.
Well nowadays, it's just the way, it's the way.
Now, did you get interrupted?
Well, I mean, my kids are in the job market, some of them. They pretty much keep an eye. They keep an eye on what the going rate is and they'll, they'll hop.
My, my daughter's is in academia, and what she'll do is every eight months, she'll leave her position, go travel Europe for two or three months and then come back and get another job.
Got that, yep.
And you know, I think businesses have shot themselves in the foot by not treating their employees fairly. They try to get every bit out of them as they can, and the employees are finally like, you know, it doesn't even matter. I don't even, I'm not even gonna give you a two week notice, 'cause you wouldn't give it to me. You know what I mean?
My, my company decided to lay off my entire division to bring, to bring on board prison work to do cheaper. Not understanding, it could be a year, year and a half to groom a tech to work on these problems. And they lost all the major customers within a year.
Yeah.
The only person that complained about my work schedule was my wife, 'cause I was never home.
Yeah.
'Cause I was, I, I traveled sixty, eighty percent of the time.
Wow.
You know, it was just.
Let's say she has two.
And even when I was home, if I came home on a, on a Friday, I needed to do, you know, my time card and service reports on, on Saturday. And then Sunday I needed to wind up to, to head out on Monday morning or Sunday night.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, that's how my wife was affected by it as well.
Yeah, and there were times that I was gone for four to six months at a time.
Wow, that's crazy.
Couple of times I was gone for, for a couple of years.
Like not coming home at all?
Coming home at all.
Wow.
But that was guard duty.
Oh.
Yeah, I was selling a facility in California, and it was three months of lack in Ohio.
Sorry, gentlemen.
No, it's. It's not an everyday occurrence, so.
No, thankfully.
This is, um, we do what we have to do.
Yep.
Yep.
So I will let you bring that up, as far as that goes. If you, do you wanna bring it up?
Oh, sure. I can, yeah. The email was addressed to me, so I should.
Yeah. Well, the original one from, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And all the other ones.
Yeah, well, and he said your town administrator can, um, your town administrator can, can accept this as a, but I have not responded to any of it, 'cause I saw that you did.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I cannot find any emails.
Yeah, I.
And we never consulted the attorney, so there's nothing to respond to for that. But I mean, I, except, that was today's.
Except for today. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, before the request.
Yeah, I'll, I'll bring up the, the whole email chain.
Okay.
'Cause we've got lots of time tonight.
Do we?
Yeah. We do.
Okay.
Question?
Yeah.
On your desk, where is the, uh, the gizmo?
Right, pretty much where you left it.
Well, Sean left it, so.
Oh, it's right. If you sit, if you sit in my chair, it's like right here.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna read that.
Okay.
Actually, I should probably go get it.
I need that thing for tomorrow.
Yes, yes. And, um.
What do you need it for tomorrow?
Road committee.
Road committee.
Okay.
So.
The first road.
Well, I was going to, I, I've got the clip that I broke coming in.
Oh, I don't think I have that.
Yeah, which is, we're two separate issues.
Yeah, two separate hooks.
Um, I had, at the last road committee meeting, I had asked Peter to give me a list of everything they've done this year on roads. And I emailed him once about it, and then I texted him, I guess he's away. And, um, and I said, I, I, you never sent me all this information, so I can give it to SWRPC to plug into their thing. So he said he called SWRPC and they said they only do it once every five years. And I didn't respond to that, because when I talked to the guy, he, I asked him if we give you the list of everything we've done, col- cullbrows, cracks, anything, whatever, can, is there an easy thing for you to do, like just plug it in and give us the new, what to do next? You know, what roads turn green or red or whatever. And he said he could do that, so, but.
Is he back tomorrow?
He's back, he's coming back tonight, so he'll be there tomorrow.
Oh, good. Good. What was that SW?
RPC.
Southwestern.
Southwestern, any commission, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but he's never given me the list of everything that was done this year, so.
All right, so you guys over the meeting yet, or no?
No, we didn't.
We did, no.
All right, so we're at, uh, five oh nine. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have taken cough drop, Teflon Pearl cough things and inhaler, and I'm still coughing, so I apologize in advance.
Good evening. Uh, tonight we'll be discussing warrant articles and budget line items. Four forty-five Turnpike Road discussion, some roundtable stuff, and at least one on public to round out the evening, um, 'cause that's the way we roll. So with that, uh, did you want us to start, uh, the warrant article stuff, Debbie?
Yes, please, you need to get this going.
Did we wanna see what the gentleman is here for?
Oh.
If you need to wrap up your warrant articles for a second.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
It'll be a long discussion on warrant articles, and an ongoing discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, all right. Good evening, sir. If you could just state your name for the record.
Dean Pachica. I live on one ten Lower Pratt Pond Road.
Nice to meet you.
I'm here about this.
Yes, sir.
Which came as a real surprise, since I resurfaced the driveway a year and a half ago, to get a stop work order now. Just, there are a few items. The property, when I bought it, had a driveway there. Unfortunately, I'll need one copy. It was actually conceived in the background of the listing when I bought the property. I'll, I'll give it to you guys. They originally excavated it to bring in the lumber when they built the house. Since I've lived there, I've been using it mostly for trailers. Um, I had trouble parking cars there, 'cause across the street would keep using it for two years and blocking me in. And this is all from twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Horse trailers included. And these are like twenty, twenty-two foot trailers. These aren't little.
Can I ask how long the driveway is, just out of curiosity?
About thirty-five, forty feet.
And that's.
About thirty-five.
That's how it was, and that's how it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, there was a little decorative fence they put in right before, when they listed the house that they put it in, that after they made some changes across the street, I couldn't turn a trailer anymore, but behind my truck, so I yanked the fence, I could bring it from the top. And all I did was resurface it. That's it. Now, before I did it, I asked Rick, I came in here for something else and asked about it, um, with the land use clerk, who would ask someone from DVW, and they all said, I didn't need a permit. I'm just adding more stone. So, the reasons, you can do whatever you want with it. Reasons given, that I need to pull a permit making a substantial change to an existing driveway, but I was told that I wasn't. And, uh, what's the other one that?
Second driveway.
Yeah, again, what the rights were in, for.
Sorry.
Did it in two thousand and two, but, um, like I said, it was there when I bought the property.
Oh, so you're saying that that was in front of the fence, then? Like that area that?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah?
All right.
There's a picture in there that you can actually see the gravel that was there. It's a really crappy gray ground, gravel, and and they didn't bother putting any fabric down, so it was getting really overgrown. It was not well done, that's for sure. But the problem is, is that on the easterly side, it's all ledge. And on the westerly side, it's not, so it was doing one of those, which is why I resurfaced it.
The easterly side would be the side towards Pratt Brook?
Or is it damn, yes. Yeah, it's thirty-five feet from the spillway.
And I thought that was, uh, one of the major components was the wetland setback, like being too close to the wetlands.
Again, it was there when I bought the property. I don't know what it was in two thousand and two, but, I mean, I don't know when they moved the spillway, but.
Spillway was moved?
Oh, yeah, years ago. It was more in the middle of the dam. They moved over to one end.
And was there a driveway permit for that second driveway back in oh two, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
That was in oh two?
Yeah. Now, that's been, um, dug up a number of times, because there's a groundwater drainpipe that crosses the street, and when they were putting that in, um, to mitigate some of the flooding, they tore up my electrical, which is buried there. So they had a, they thought that would be did that.
This was recent?
Before I bought the property.
Oh.
That the camp across the street didn't have its own well, that they ran a water line from my house across the street for their water. And that's, they thought it up for that. And, uh, there was one other thing.
Again, before you bought the house?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It was all owned by the same person?
Right.
Oh, my cousins, yes.
Right.
And that's who gave these two of those pictures, and she's the one who explained to me, yeah, they had, they used that for the staging of the lumber and everything else. That's why they did it originally.
So, since Gary and I were out there, I, um, talked to it, planning board and, uh, PPA has come in as well. I still haven't wrapped my head around the idea that there is no such thing as a grandfathered-in horseshoe driveway. That one just boggles my mind. That aside, uh, we looked into the wetland setbacks, and they said there is, from what I understand, they said there's no grandfathering for wetland setbacks either. These are strange, um, concepts to me, because in my mind, it seems like now we make retroactive laws. Not only are the laws that say, demand people to fix their properties, they come with fines, and hefty fines. So I hope I'm misunderstanding what I heard.
So the, um, the rec, the grandfathering thing is, that's a state rule when it comes to driveways, that there is no grandfathering. However, you don't have to go around town and say, your driveway's not right, your, you know, this is, uh, the only time it has to be remedied. So, and it's every driveway. It's not horseshoe driveways or two driveways or any, it's every single driveway in town. So you don't have to go back and, and address every single person's driveway.
But you can. But you can? This is where it.
Right.
It's mind boggling to me, because now it becomes something that is impossible.
Right.
Literally impossible to give justice for all. We have, and we're gonna see him again tonight, one of the residents saying, I just want justice. Well, this is, this is literally impossible for us to, to deliver justice. If it's like, wow, you get along with your neighbor, everything's cool. You don't, bring them here. We'll take care of it.
Well, it's not even that. It's if, if there's any kind of, um, issue that's causing drainage issues or erosion issues or, so that type of thing, that has to be remedied. That, that's where, kinda where the grandfathering kinda goes away. I mean, it's not a.
Here's the other, other side of the problem. Here's what the PPA did.
So sorry for the diversion, but it, it, no, no, it's really, this is something very.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, we are, and then.
Yeah.
And this is the result.
And trying to work our way through it, has, it's been one of the most.
That is causing drainage problems and an erosion problem.
Because there's.
The stone was mitigating that.
There's direct, you said there was a driveway, they say there never was.
Right.
Yeah, and it's.
Well, you're looking at pictures.
Yeah, and they showed us pictures too. It's, it's like.
Yeah, 'cause it's not a driveway. Like it does, none of the pictures shows that connection through the fence to the house, the way that it exists since you made it. You know, like that.
But if you had a driveway and you put a fence at the end, it doesn't, it's no longer a driveway?
Well, no, I mean, like, it looked like it might have been like a pull-off, like you said, a staging area of some sorts, and then you turned it into a driveway. Like, I don't know that that was ever meant to be a driveway.
I know when I was looking at the house, they were using this as a driveway before I bought it. And like I said, it took two years to get the cousins to stop parking there.
But I guess my, my point in bringing that up is it may be that our hands are tied. And that there's no such thing as grandfathered in.
Right.
And that is.
So, um, what is the setback?
Fifty.
Fifty feet.
Okay, thirty-five from the top of the spillway. It's probably fifty to the, to the brook.
Yeah, well, what we measured was thirty, thirty feet to the edge of the gravel.
On the water?
Down, so down, right by the spillway, there was like some rocks. And then somebody had put, it looked like an old survey post, an iron pin.
That used to be the Pratt Dam property that they pulled.
Yeah, so that was laying on a rock and right on the edge of the brook, so that's where we measured from. And we just, we didn't try to hold it level or anything. We just pulled out a tape measure, measured about roughly thirty feet, is what we saw, to the corner of the gravel.
Yeah, and it's all complicated due by, um, your assertions and their assertions over the boundaries, which we don't get into. Uh, but then trying to understand this whole thing, you know, there's, there's a lot of pieces going on.
I gave, what's, what's Greg, Gary? Gary, I'm sorry. I gave him the, um, plan that's actually filed with the county. 'Cause it wasn't, you, here at the town office, the, the white version. And if you look at, which I actually have a copy of with me. Where they actually, on the subdivision plan, call out the distance of the dam. And then they had Rogers Engineering go up a new one, and it went from a hundred and nine feet to a hundred and sixty-six feet, the dam. On a boundary that's no one proves.
Is this a big part of the court case that's pending? Okay. And like Sean said, we have no jurisdiction over property.
Well, Joe's using documents from the town to justify his actions.
That the town drafted?
The driveway regulations and everything?
No, no, it's all the different provisions that you have, you know, the subdivision plans and all the comments going back and forth, the history of it. That that's what he's using as, this is, this is the way it is. It's like, mm, like four revisions, like, oh, maybe, but, no. And, uh, this is not a lot to read, but I don't think there's a single statement in that whole document that's actually true.
Okay, you can see it, so, need to get my glasses. What's the, um, map and lot number of your lot? Do you know?
Sixty-eight dash two, three dash sixteen.
Three sixty-eight two. I'll go put a property file and see if there's.
Oh, yeah, I believe so.
The sec, 'cause the second driveway.
There is no driveways indicated at all.
In the property file, there's no driveway.
Jason, since you went up there.
I'm sorry, three dash ninety-two.
Just in about the front and the back of the, um.
You want to take this down?
The driveway and pile enough that stone over there?
Oh, that was, um, that's just part of the things that have happened there. I, I was measuring just like Gary and I.
Is that re, is that recent?
Yeah, I don't know if that's still there.
The fall, it's not currently there anymore, no.
Oh, it's not, okay.
There's like a smaller amount of rocks that went by last week. It wasn't, yeah, it's not built up like that.
No, it's still there, just shoved away.
Yeah, shoved aside, but it's not built up.
So it's like this now?
But it tore up all the, um, weed barrier and all the gravel. It's, it's all pushed out to dirt now. So now we're trying to rinse the water and wash it more out.
So how long had it been this way with, now, is that a culvert piece over there, or is that just another?
That's a rock.
That's, that's just a stone, okay.
So that's the plan that we had.
That's the way it was in August of twenty twenty-two. That's the way it is now. And is that two B?
This is the original?
No, I was looking for this. That's actually, that's what's filed with the county.
This.
Two eight four five oh, is that the plan number? Oh, it doesn't say, no, it doesn't.
Well, it's.
So his deed says, together with the right to pass and repass by motor vehicle by foot or otherwise over Lower Pratt Pond Road as shown on plan two eight four five zero for access to an, access to an egress from lot three ninety-two two.
Yep.
So, we'd have to pull that plan.
That is the plan.
Two eight four five zero, from the registry of deeds.
Did you say the lot was, uh, ninety-two two?
Yeah, this is it.
Yep.
Right here. Two eight four five zero.
Okay, so that's it. Private loan agreement.
What is your request for us tonight?
So let me, um, fix the damaged stone. Just to fill the stop work order. 'Cause what's happening now is water that's pouring on the road is now washing down that, into that hole, you know, huge potholes.
And that's the picture that you showed.
But the weight of that rip route actually pushed all the gravel right through the fabric. So now it's just, it's just a mess. Yeah, but there is no excavator anymore. That whole easterly side is nothing but ledge, so you're not digging that anywhere.
There was no excavation done?
No.
And resurface, resurfacing that?
Well, I do replace the stone, because the other side was starting to wash away over time.
So how was that done then? Like, what was the method of construction? That new gravel is, uh, relatively.
The flyer of trucking just dumped a few yards of stone in, and I just used the overflow one of the tractor and smoothed that out. That's it.
Yes.
Well, I did put down wrong fabric before I started. That was his target, that's what he aimed at.
You're three ninety-two two, right?
Yep.
What's interesting is like it has that hundred-foot setback for the brook.
That's where the setback.
I know all the, all the lots have the different setback boundaries on them. For whatever reason, this one, you know, goes to the center of the brook. And for whatever reason, this one, you know, goes to the center of the brook. Oh, a hundred feet, so I don't know.
It looks like that's building setback line, right?
Yeah, which the driveway aspect again. Yeah, actually comes in. Right here.
Are you trying to use it as a driveway or just a parking area?
This is where that driveway is.
Are you trying to use it as a driveway or just a parking area or?
Both, actually, a lot of times, especially in the winter, that where that paved parking lot, which is actually on the next lot.
What?
The paved ground? Is actually on the next. No, not all of it. They, for the subdivision, one of the things that, keep in mind, this is all one family, they don't need to.
Right, yeah.
That the requirement that had to have two hundred feet frontage, so you moved the line, well, the driveway was already there. The garage was there before the house.
Right.
That doesn't sound like it'll be a problem at any time.
No.
I had offered to fix it when I bought the property and at the time. Dennis, but he was like, don't even waste your time.
That's your, your butter?
It was, yeah, he sold.
There's no driveway permits in here at all.
No what?
No driveway permits in here at all. For either driveway.
All right, well, when did we require driveway permits?
Well, when Dave Conson visually changed the road to a class five, it was a shared driveway. That road, it wasn't a road at that time.
Lower Pratt?
That part of Lower Pratt, it was.
Was a shared driveway?
Yep. Yep, that was part of the agreement to make to allow the subdivision was he had to bring it up to class five. Before that, it was camper road. It was a shared driveway.
History.
Curiouser, curiesser.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was okay, I couldn't find it, but I know that there was a letter coming from the town to the PPA's lawyer, because they had written to do this to Conson. When he originally did that. The town clerk, you can't bless him, so. They did it anyway.
I didn't see anything about that either.
Oh, Hazel gave me literally a stack of all the correspondence.
So two components for me of, you know, why um I had decided to. Issue the season that, or the stop work order. Was the number one element was the being within the wetland setback. And then number two, just the prop, the boundary dispute that was going on, you know, between you guys, like, which needs to get settled. Uh cause they feel like you're on their property, you feel like they're on your property.
The state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
That's why you didn't have that copy? On the subdivision that you had, it was actually easement. The previous one we had. That they wanted an easement. Just east of that telephone pole, net nine? And the state said no. And they made, Marina made that change before they'd accept it, before it went to county.
May I see what that is?
Yep.
Now, telephone pole is.
That nine?
That part right there.
Yep. And that's where they wanted an easement from the spillway to there, and the state said no. In fact, if you look in the road documents, you'll see where they changed it from three hundred and twenty feet to three hundred and fifty feet. That's where that distance came from, that's when the state pushed it back. Their property ends at the spillway, southwest corner.
And even, your pictures clearly show that fence in place and only that. Parking area being used at the end. I'm sure we'd probably be in the same predicament right now. If that was the only thing they put gravel in, uh but being that you took out the fence and extended the driveway all the way up.
Well, the fence got out the year before, it's because they did the changes across the street and put it back a trailer.
Line is all the same for me, the point being that you can clearly see that there was grass all the way up to the fence. And the only evidence that we have of that area being used is that. Like that small spot where the trailer was parked. For some period of time, but I'm not sure.
That's gravel. Most of it washed away over time.
Well, not like, I'm still not seeing gravel, I'm seeing a fence and grass, you know, some mud.
But that's like, when I first bought the property, that's what it was. It was a little strip of grass at the bottom and that was it.
Your left is three ninety-two-two?
Yes. How? Yes.
So the house had not been placed where this mass was made?
No, not up there. The garage went up like two years before the house.
Is it the gravel that went in a while ago now?
July of twenty-two. It's about a year and a half ago.
Or is this had come to us a bit sooner, all of it, too?
Well, I thought I was doing everything above board, I came and asked everybody and.
Did you specify that it was a second driveway? Cause that makes a difference too.
Well, Rick was there, so he was parked in it.
Yeah, but did he know this?
Yeah, 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 he was, like I said, he was there when I asked him about it. And that was, yeah, it's pre-existing, we need to pull a permit. And when. Joe sent. Uh that email um thing that was destroying the dam and everything else, and it was sent to NHDES. They sent somebody out, asked, did someone from DPW looked at it and said, well, it's a pre-existing driveway, and that was the answer. I talked to New Hampshire Environmental Services and Dave was like, yeah, he looked at it and there's it.
At what point was this?
Um early last summer.
Do you currently have court dates scheduled? So, I mean. Correct me if I'm wrong, um this app, so I don't see that there's anything we can do. Until the court makes its decision as to what's going on.
This has nothing to do with the court. Aspect, uh cause theirs, their court date is over other elements.
Okay.
So is, we have complete authority over this?
Okay. There's nothing. No crossover between elements, as you call them?
No, no. Yeah, cause they're not, I don't, they're not mixed at this point.
So if this state. I guess we overrule the state because the state doesn't know about wetlands setbacks or?
I would hope New Hampshire DES does.
Well, that's a, if they have been called, then there would be some type of report on file. I'm thinking. There has to be, there has to be some type of written something substantiating.
That they were there.
Yeah.
Don't we wish, Sean?
Yeah, yeah.
But then the town never received a copy of it.
Well, it's the town, the town that instigated it.
It's the town that instigated?
When Joe sent out that email to the town complaining about that was destroying the dam and everything else. Um I'm blanking her name, terrible names.
Susan?
Nope.
Laurie?
Jen, Jennifer?
I think it was Jennifer. Sent it all to NHDES.
Uh, was it Susan?
How long ago?
Beginning of summer.
This year? Oh.
Was that after or before um? The code enforcement officer went up there?
Which time? Rick was there first and he's no longer employed, I know that.
Builder inspector, not code enforcement.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause he was building stuff. Couple of years ago, cause I saw some building permits.
I was thinking in terms of Gary.
Yeah, he, that was later.
That was later.
Yeah.
So.
And in between, they were demanding that I cut the wood, that they were gonna cut the woods back another six feet, I'm like, no, you're not, that's my property. No, you're not. That's with this whole, a little lot. I'm funny like that, you don't get to tell me what I have to do with my property.
So, yeah, uh what we're gonna do is get with Jennifer and see what we, like, what she has on her end. Of it, um. And see if there's anything from uh DES, you know, that she had received back, maybe, are you gonna pull a file?
File's not right on the table.
We'll try to understand it better, like, you know, understand what DES is um feelings on it was.
I think they found the claims unsubstantiated, that's why I don't think they'll be able to find anything.
Did you get a letter to that effect, or no?
No, I went there and they said, oh yeah, we went out there and looked. Okay, and that was it, and she was washed away, it's like, okay.
Yeah.
But I looked at the file and I, there wasn't anything in it, so.
Just know we didn't send that stock work order, um you know, like, hard, it was definitely, you know, considered. So, uh just the same, I'd like an opportunity, you know, to look into it further on our end and. But from what I'm understanding, what we're being told now, um is that you're definitely in violation of that wetland setback, so. A- as well as the other two aspects of not getting a permit and the sec- putting in a second driveway.
Well, again, I, I wasn't here in two thousand and two, that was. That was the Consons.
But you do agree that the, it's different, or do you feel like it's not any different than what it was? When you purchased the property?
No, I don't think it is.
Okay.
I mean, was the, the stone almost all washed away? Absolutely, but that's why it was resurfaced again.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I just asked Jen, she said she never received, she did. Talked to DES, but she never received anything, so she doesn't even know if they went there or not.
Okay. So, we have a little bit of homework, I'll call Rick personally, um too, you know, I haven't, hadn't called him yet, uh but I will.
I'll be amazed if he remembers a conversation from two years ago, but.
He's pretty good, yeah, yeah, um. Yeah, and that's what we can do right now, unless you guys feel compelled one way or another. I'd certainly entertain a motion.
Yeah, he did tell me I'd have to pull a permit if I was sort of paved it. Because of the underground lines and all that.
No, I don't think, I don't think we have enough information to um make a decision tonight. I think we do need, we need to look at it closer.
And I think their main concern, from what I heard before, if I may, may I? Was, is the plowing, like plowing it toward the dam or off to the side?
One, I always do uphill.
So that's toward the dam?
And last year, which I was saying, I did all this damage and all that, I couldn't plow. The snow, so I, I, I use a side-by-side to plow it.
Yeah.
And the snow was too heavy, and if by the time I got home, it was frozen solid, there was like nothing I could do.
So I haven't been there, so I don't know which way is uphill, is that toward the dam?
It's towards my house.
Okay, so if you, if you're gonna plow it, you're gonna plow it away from the dam.
Yeah, I'm past the dam anyway, it.
Or a- away from the?
Yeah, there's one of the pictures and one of them packets actually shows snow piled up, like, up towards his house.
Okay, alright, I was just, I mean, I know that was one of their main concerns.
Then, because then he hit ledge with the plow too.
Oh, the ledge and then also the fence is in the way at that point.
Yeah, but he couldn't even get near the fence because of all the ledge sticking up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I appreciate you coming in, is there anything else that you wanted to let us know about or?
Well, just that, this isn't, this is just a symptom of the rail issue. That certain groups within the PPA made it clear that they want me to move, and from day one, this has been an ongoing issue for the last four years. It's been one thing after another. How do you put this down? The truth, truth hasn't exactly been a necessity. Which is very frustrating.
Okay. Yeah, sorry for having that experience, you know, with your neighbors, yeah.
Well, it's also, I mean. If you actually look at that subdivision plan, it's actually town road right up until that wooden.
Right.
Bridge. But the town, they get chased away, they can't even work on that road. You know, they, after the, they, they just turn around at the corner and that's it, and won't, and won't go on it.
Yeah.
At which corner?
Where the lower Pratt bends.
Oh, right before the intersection there.
Yep, right at the intersection where Lower Pratt bends in middle. And they flat out told me, you need to chase people away from it, it's like, it's a town road, I'm not gonna chase people away.
Chase people away from the road?
No, from the pond.
Oh, the pond.
They don't want fishing, it, it's like, yeah, but you can't do that, it's a public road.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a town road.
Oh, for fishing.
Gotcha.
I thought you were talking about the DPW, that guys wouldn't, they wouldn't work there.
I was thinking DPW, yeah, the plowing and, yeah.
I haven't heard that.
No, they don't, they don't, they don't plow on that, they turn around.
Even on the town portion of the road?
Yeah, that one hundred-foot stretch has been pretty much orphaned.
Yeah, and that may just be, you know, I don't, I don't know why, they would turn around earlier, like, in the road, so.
Lots of pain in the ass, cause you'd have to back the plow up and then plow forward and.
There you go, yeah, that's what makes sense, right, yeah.
So, so maybe if I was plowing and someone said, oh, don't do this, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Wouldn't have to tell me twice either, so I don't blame them. But then they come at me, and this is the last time I was down here, was because they want me to fix the road.
Yeah.
It's like, uh, no, this is what I paid taxes for, I'm not, I'm not gonna.
Look, if you don't mind me asking, what was the, was there a hard court date?
Yes, they have to have their response in by December eighteenth and the court date's the eighteenth in January. Yeah, and they're fairly upset that I issued, I had the not, no trespass order done. I've been catching, you know, they wanted a fifty-foot eastern along the back, back of my property, and that was declined, and they keep insisting there is one. So, you know, I kept inviting people in my backyard.
Yeah.
Goes that way, you can walk right up any hill to the trails. Okay, well, thank you all for your time.
And sorry we couldn't be more definitive about it.
Well, I mean, huh, oh, I mean, I'm willing to work with you guys, whatever we can do about the setback or anything like that, but. Right now, I don't have a driveway, it's completely on my property.
Yeah.
And pretty much everything. Um, east of my driveway, with that gravel driveway, is all wetland and dam, so I. I'm kinda limited where I could have it.
Okay.
I was gonna ask if there's anywhere else you can move it that would meet the setback of the fifty feet.
Well, I I wanted to move the paved driveway first, but that was outrageously expensive because of all the ledge.
Right.
And there's ledge from there all the way to that left-hand edge of that driveway, that gravel, it's all ledge.
Okay.
So. And that'll be a minor get rid of.
Can I keep all that stuff to put as part of the minutes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And if you need a soft copy, let me know, I'll be happy to email to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for taking up your time, but.
Alright, we have ten minutes and we have to get these warrant articles done, so.
Well, y'all have a wonderful weekend.
Cause we cannot put enough of it in.
Have a good night, sir.
Do you need this big map, Steve?
No, that's yours, I, that's why I gave it to, uh, Gary to make sure you guys have a copy, because you have this on the date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll put that.
This sounds like there was a phone call.
So Jen talked to him, and she asked him to send him something, an email, so that top in the blue is from DES. And basically says the driveway is new. That's from DES to Jen, oh no.
No, this one's from Jen.
All from Jen.
And this one is another one from Jen. And it's, it just says.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like she did have a phone call.
Right.
So, Peter's flight's got changed and he's not gonna be able to make the road meeting tomorrow.
Oh, no.
Um. So. Yeah, that major component.
I'd say so.
Yeah.
Should we postpone it? I'm getting it too.
Yeah, yeah.
Should we postpone it to next one, start with something?
Think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's a different one. Two, twelve, thirteen, okay.
Okay.
What's up, Jen?
I'm just observing.
Okay.
I have no issues.
Yeah, such fun last week. Yeah.
Yes.
Can we give you some issues?
Well, I know.
Are you interested?
I have some I can jump on you.
I thought it'd be good to come for four forty-five too, just in case.
Yeah.
Good call.
Thank you.
What was the date on that letter showing?
August thirty-first.
And what year?
Twenty-three.
Did you have any issues you might consider?
Oh, so that was recent.
Yeah.
Did you say it sounds like there's a phone call?
Yeah, yeah, she said she called him.
She couldn't recall what the actual response was, huh?
I think she said, do you wanna get her?
I don't know.
If she's willing, and evil.
Taking depositions?
So, is this you, Jen? Cause Jennifer has the auto signature unless she responded from her phone. But you wouldn't be, was, did you ever use, like share her?
No, no, so that's definitely, yeah, that's definitely her.
No email? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely.
Phone call or something.
There's missing, missing piece.
Yeah, well, and, you know, last night, after the meeting, I talked to Joe Woodward.
I don't know who he's calling.
And on. From talking, I don't know if the state necessarily puts stuff in writing. He said, you know, his experience with them, there's a lot of talking.
Yeah.
And the guy gives verbal go ahead and they go, and they do it, and there's nothing. From, no, well, I'm, I'm just relaying my conversation and I, and I'm not gonna go deep into it.
Yeah.
Suffice to say, that was the feeling that I got.
Yeah. Interesting.
Yeah. It all, um. It is very interesting.
A little too interesting.
Remember, it's a time for silence and peace, cause we're entering the Christmas season.
Ah, you do.
Oh, I love that.
Well, fit to start.
Write a little serenity.
We'll have to wait to hear. If there was anything to hear.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, do you think it's appropriate to call Rick, to see if he recollects anything?
Yeah.
Although, although I think your point is.
Well, the winter's not here yet, but you're waiting for someone to blow.
It's not able to be disputed. Violation of wetland setbacks.
Right.
Is that alone.
Right.
As much as, um, I have a hard time understanding them kind laws, like dumping dirt on the ground is a violation of a wetland setback. Apparently it is.
Mm-hmm.
Because loam with grass. Is something different than gravel.
Naturally occurring, right?
Well.
Yeah.
Well, the community driveway is considered a structure, so.
Neither one might naturally occur.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so. I don't know what, I mean. These, these rules get, they get interesting.
Yeah.
And I know there's a need to have law and order in town. We can't have people just running onto each other's properties and, you know what I mean? So I understand there's a real need, but, but the notion. That we cannot give equal justice to everybody bothers me. It really bothers me.
That's a, I find that we get caught up in these scenarios where you can't deliver it equally.
You can.
Yeah.
And then we're told enforce, 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 but use discretion. Don't go after everybody, I counted on the way here. And my path comes from Page Hill, Smithville Road, Ashby Road, to here. I counted nine driveway violations. They're all punishable with real money.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not nothing either, what did you guys put for a fine? You guys are both part of that driveway.
I was.
I came in late, just to be clear, just enough to sign it, and I know what's going on.
You came in late. But there was. Did I read that there's like a thirteen hundred dollar fine?
I don't recall, and.
I don't remember either.
Correct the problem, there's something.
So.
It's right here, but anyways.
And that's the thing, if it's, if it's creating a hazard or a problem, other than you don't like your neighbor, you know what I mean, or whatever.
But it doesn't say that. Nor does it say that, we hear it, don't go after everybody. Only go after the people we say to go after, or if you don't like them.
Well, not, and.
That's how I'm hearing it.
Yeah, so it's, and and it's not that, it's, is it causing erosion, is there water flow problems, is there. You know, like that kinda issue, not because you don't like.
So there's an actual list that determines whether or not we should say you're not grandfathered, cause that would be handled.
Well, you're not saying you're not grandfathered, you're saying your driveway is in violation of the driveway regulations.
But it doesn't matter if it was there for two hundred years.
Because of. Because of, it's causing, like, um, like Porter Hill, that water was running right down into. And I don't know, I'm not sure if it was a driveway or not, but that was running right into Main Street and causing this big ice thing right across Main Street.
Yeah.
Like that had to be fixed.
And that was between the town and the state.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
But, but something like that, that would be.
We have one of those scenarios out on Timbertop.
Yeah, it's ongoing right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the, the owner's aware of it and has been advised to.
So that's another.
Right.
Repair his driveway so that it doesn't keep doing this.
Right.
So, it's on topic, and not to make you gentlemen wait, um, but with that scenario, was a timeframe given?
I don't recall, I believe code enforcement officer and DPW director went up.
Okay.
I wasn't part of the conversation, so.
Mm-hmm, mm. Is there.
Was this something with the.
He did inquire with me directly to, like one of, one of the people out there, yeah.
Well, the complaint. Was this the, a driveway flooding the road or something? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So maybe I can see it in the driveway regulations. If there's a checklist that says you don't enforce it in these cases, then I'm happy. But if it's word of mouth. That this is the spirit of things.
I feel like there's something, I can't, can't, cause I remember hashing this out for hours and hours.
We did, but, the, yeah, the one thing that came up, which I believe it was coming from, um. One of the lawyers over at Southwest Regional Product. Was that, unless it's something that, um, that's creating something, just, you can ignore it if it's not a big deal.
Or any of the director comments.
If, if it's creating an issue, for the safety of other people.
If it's creating an issue. Of other people, then you have to deal with it.
That's when you have to deal with it.
Right.
Not, if, if, if there's no issue, then you don't have to.
So is it an issue if somebody is angry at their neighbor, and comes and says, this driveway's in violation, we now have a complaint?
No, no. But that's, that's not, it's not hurting any, it's, it's not creating a safety hazard.
Yeah, and I'd have to see that in writing, because if that was the case.
Water runoff or erosion, yeah.
If that was the case, then some of these decisions.
Put in there somewhere.
Some of these decisions, theoretically, if we said, we're not going to make that man fix his driveway or that woman. Um, it would hold up in court.
Right.
That's what I'm looking at.
Right.
Theoretically, but I, there's no way it would hold up if it's just, hey, this was the spirit of our law.
Mm-hmm.
That isn't gonna hold up in court.
Right. Right.
And then you can't have equal justice.
Well, the spirit of the RSA does, that holds up.
Well, there, that's the state, we're just New Ipswich.
Yeah, we're just trying to concentrate on our stuff.
I know, right?
So, I don't know, it's.
We, we have enough stuff.
It has certainly been the most challenging past two months that I've faced as a selectman.
Yes. I would concur.
By far.
Jim?
I just wanna add a comment to your discussion. And use a slightly different example, first of all, you can't make a law that makes, that that turns somebody's driveway into illegal or their house lot becomes illegal. And it, one of the easy things to look at grandfathering is, let's say you have a one and a half acre lot and you're in a neighborhood that's two acres long. The lot's been there forever.
Lot of record, yeah.
It's a lot of record, you can build on it, okay? I mean, you still have to be able to put in a lot of stuff to go meet that sort of stuff, but the lot is a lot of record. And you don't have to get a special exception or anything else, there's a lot of record. If the driveway was there twenty-five years ago. Then.
The state RSA's guarding driveways are the one that dictate the no grandfather thing.
Is that what it is, the state says no grandfather?
Yeah, it's the state. Yep.
On all driveways or just their driveways? Because I do know that the state, the state, the state requires, if you have a driveway under the state road, existing driveway.
On all driveways.
That's all remote control state.
And you change the use of your property. They can require you to get a new driveway permit.
Interesting.
But that's with a change of use of the property, right? That's what was explained to me when I spoke to the gentleman out at Swansea. So I have resources on it.
Hmm.
But anyway, you're supposed to give us your decision.
Yes, sir. So we don't have a decision yet, cause we haven't, uh, spoken since, uh, I sent out some additional information. Um, you know, for these gentlemen to consider.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So in light of that, you guys have any dialogue that you'd like to have in regards to, um. The zoning versus that were highlighted and of the allowed businesses and the ZBA decision and such?
Need to refresh my memory on the emails, when did they?
It was a couple of weeks ago, I sent it out that night, I believe.
And I sent, and I sent out the zoning board minutes that same night too.
What time does that start?
Six o'clock.
Oh. Um, yeah, we ha- we haven't spoken as of.
Do you guess though, maybe, or who knows?
I don't know yet, Jim, like I haven't spoken with either one of these gentlemen after, um, I asked them to consider certain materials, so.
And I sent out the zoning board minutes that same night too.
Mm-hmm.
I do have a question though, for the board. And I don't, I don't need a detailed answer now, but last night, all three of you were at a finance advisory committee meeting. Was your meeting posted?
No, because it wasn't a meeting and they weren't making decisions, they were just hearing.
You still have to post it. September, uh, uh, November twenty-seventh wasn't posted, there were two. I guess my question is, how many meetings of other boards has this board attended with two or more people in the last six months? That's gonna be a right to know request. You can't just go roaming off and and and, you know, I mean, you sit at the table, it's not like one's up here and one's out here in the audience. But I don't need to know that.
Excuse me.
It is a violation of the right to know.
Okay, it's a, it's a public meeting and, um, what I was told was that it's a little bit different. Cause there isn't, um, binding decisions made, so even though last night we spoke as a group, it was like a workshop, uh, session. And it wasn't finalized, nothing was finalized.
So you were, you've been told. By attorney?
No, just, I heard it at different classes, the NHMA training.
I mean, if you inadvertently, two of you wind up at a meeting.
And I thought that it was mentioned that the select board was gonna be at the meeting. Um, one element that I had not considered was, and it even came up at that meeting last night. I was still considering it a finance advisory committee meeting and not a select board meeting, but, um. Someone before this meeting had mentioned that since we are the higher authority and when we come into the room, it becomes a select board meeting. Is that how you perceive it too, does it change the dynamic?
I perceive it as the trustees of trust funds came in here, it'd be a joint meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And should be posted for both boards.
Yeah.
There's no, the hierarchy gets a little, little crazy when you're dealing with elected boards. The finance advisory committee is a subset of the board of selectmen.
So with the finance advisory committee being, meeting being posted. And it stated that the select board was going to be there and the week before that the select board and the planning board was gonna be there, that it was a joint meeting.
I didn't see it stated in the posting, but it was it?
It was supposed to be. You know, it's not that we're trying to get these other boards and committees into rooms.
Well, no, I mean, you're on TV, I mean.
Yeah, that's why, it's, it's a public meeting, yeah.
All I'm getting at is, I think you need to be careful with your postings.
Okay.
So it wouldn't count if planning board posts that select board is gonna be there? That's not enough, we would need to have.
You can do, you can do one posting and it can come from this office, the, the planning board's gonna meet at seven o'clock with the board of selectmen, period.
A double posting?
Correct.
That's good enough.
Yeah.
So.
That, that's good enough.
Wasn't that what happened with finance?
I, I'm gonna look at it right now.
Advisory.
Advisory committee sent a. And it was just gonna be a work session?
Well, we're discussing the capital improvement plan, right?
The three of you, two of you cannot discuss town business outside of a posted meeting. You can inadvertently run into each other and talk about the weather. It's just an observation.
But when you say discuss town business, what does that mean?
Well, if, if you two run into each other up at Shaw's in Peterborough, two of you run into each other and you make a decision in a parking lot, that's illegal.
Right, that's making a decision.
But even discussing something.
No, I think you're.
It depends on what it is. You can, you can discuss when you're gonna meet and stuff like that, cause you have to do that.
Well, and this is where it's like, well, I guess we should wear body cameras so people can monitor our.
No.
Well, and, and this is, well, where do.
All I'm saying is I saw, I saw a select, a quorum of the board of selectmen had a couple of meetings and I didn't see it in the posting.
A couple of meetings?
That's all I'm saying. Huh?
A couple?
Yeah.
And when was the other one?
Monday, Saturday, Monday.
Yeah, when was the other one?
Twenty-seventh of November.
That was Monday.
That was on.
Oh, no, that was the week before.
So it was yesterday. He's talking about yesterday and last Monday.
I'm not, I, I'm not, I'm not here to harass or anything. I'm just here to say, you, 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 you need to take a look at that and make sure you're on top of it.
Well, when that, when that meeting was, yesterday's meeting. Was originally going to be with the police department. And it got changed over to the fire department and was originally posted as, as a, a review of the budget for uh for the police department.
Then you changed your agenda.
And it, it got changed because the police chief could not make it. He was ill.
Okay, that's fine.
So then it was just a short, I wonder, about six hours before the meeting started, that we were able to get the fire department in there.
But he's not even talking about that. He's talking about the three of you were not, I didn't do an agenda because there was no agenda post.
There was no agenda.
Cause you were listening to, it was a presentation from the FAC to the VOS.
But I still think, I still think if you check into it far enough, okay, you're gonna find out. If the three selectmen are gonna listen to a presentation from the finance advisory committee.
And not discuss it or not make a decision, it still has to be noticed?
I think it has to be.
Okay, cause that's not what I was told in a class.
And, and, and call the, call the, you know, the.
Yeah, well, I just printed out some from the NHMA.
But it is.
I mean, it's fine. I will post every time they're gonna be in this, in the same room. That's fine. Not a problem.
And that's what I, I thought had been occurring and I didn't even open the last two uh FAC postings. Because all the chitter chatter speaks of all it being combined and everything.
Right.
But it clearly does not say that the planning board and the board of selectmen were gonna be there last week, even though I announced it.
Right.
A hundred times, you know, that's what we're gonna do and it was televised. But and then even uh yesterday's meeting does not even mention that the select board was gonna be there.
Yeah. I knew yesterday it was there.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yes, I didn't know yesterday it was there, but I thought it was.
I thought, I, I just wanna make sure you do that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because if I look back at, as we head toward town meetings, a couple of years ago, the entire warrant was illegal. And that's when, what's his name, quit.
Mm-hmm.
One, Captain Kangaroo went on vacation and left one person to sign the warrant. That whole town meeting was technically illegal and the one thing that you got that saved you was she didn't have a bond issue on her. She would have bond, you, you would have killed the bond issue. And it's not you guys. You guys, it was a different board, okay? But we gotta be careful.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you, Jim.
And I have posted that before too, I don't know. I mean, I just posted the agenda from Dennis and I didn't even really look at it.
Yeah.
I, I gotta get going. Okay, so if you wanna sit here and discuss it.
Alright.
No, and, and apologies for getting a little defensive here.
I don't care.
Alright, well, that's great. And we're all good. Have a good meeting over there.
That's all. That's all. We will. Okay, take care.
Bye now.
Thank you.
Alright.
Can I see what that document says? Thank you.
It's okay. No, I'm fine.
Gonna take five minutes of pause here. Everybody decompress.
Oh, man.
Round table, decompress.
Round table?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna turnpike right.
Yeah, now you're letting Lou read for a minute and then move on to the turnpike.
And I wanna pull up the emails.
Alright, I'll be back then. While you guys are reading and I'll decompress.
Yeah. There you go.
So that was from. It's last month.
What's that?
Yep, it was last month. Can you believe that?
What's that about?
When you sent the emails.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Four forty-five turnpike.
Yeah, yeah, that goes quick. Two weeks away from Christmas, New Year.
No wonder we get a chance of kicking the can down the throat, cause it's true.
It's not just lies.
Alright, we have all of this from Debbie and you. Your mail is dated. Oh, you don't have your thing.
I don't have any what thing.
I could print them if you wanted, if I knew how to access the printer.
We'll have to Debbie print them off. I was gonna print them from my house too and I was like, nah, I don't need to. They've been sent two or three times.
Yeah, and I read.
Yeah, yeah. No, I know you had mentioned it, that you had.
Yeah, I thought it was very interesting.
What it, which email are you talking about?
Do you have the email on your phone?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was from November uh twenty-second, I believe. Hey, how did I end up on this page?
It was under the um exchange.
It was under REZBA minutes four forty-five turnpike.
This is November twenty-second?
Yeah, ZBA minutes four forty-five turnpike. And I see your name on there.
You don't see my name on there?
I said I do see your name on there. From Debbie. Sean, I believe, must have BCC'd.
I did. And then December first. Uh she resented, yeah.
Okay. Minimal impact home occupations. Minimal impact home occupations are activities which meet all of the following criteria. The activity shall be carried out only by residents of the premises. The activity shall be operated entirely within the dwelling unit or accessory structure. There shall be no external evidence of the activity except for non-illuminated sign. There shall be no adverse effect of activity on the environment or surrounding properties. As a result of noise, vibration, odors, smoke, dust, lights, glare, soil, water. Or air pollution or electrical interference which causes the visual or audible interference in any radio. Or television receivers or fluctuations in line voltage off the premise. There shall be no increase in traffic or parking in the neighborhood. That is section M on.
Something. M or N?
M.
Has it Mike or an N or November?
Mike.
I got that.
Minimal impact home occupations. And this really, when you sent that, the reason I was glad to see that is because not having a full grasp of. The zoning ordinances that we have. And having a fear that a big part of our town is in direct violation, this relieved a lot of that fear.
Okay.
To me, that they're not in violation. Maybe I'm not interpreting it right. But that there are.
For that particular instance over there, there was one complaint that um. That the truck was left running with its refrigeration unit overnight, one night. Uh which probably exceeded the noise ordinance requirements after ten P M. And other than that, um I don't see that. And that was subjugated.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, in that area, so then you can see where that, this scenario doesn't fit, right?
I don't see any, other than what Lou just referred to. There was a complaint. We didn't hear how many nights it happened. Was it specified one night or not? I don't know. Of the noise of a truck. Now, whether or not that exceeds the decibels from the distance of the landowner, I'm not, I, I have no way of knowing. He may be right, he may not be. Other than that one, I don't know if we received a complaint of smoke. I don't, that would be the only one that I could see on here that would be in any way applicable.
Yeah, but that was only a one night complaint.
So this is one part that you sent, alright?
Yeah.
Where is this taken out of?
Uh, our zoning ordinances.
Oh, okay. Section N.
And uh these are actually sent to me from Walker.
Now, I have a, now I have a question.
Um and he was highlighting the areas that usually people look to um substantiate like what they're doing. Um without getting the uh variance.
Okay.
Yeah, or a special exception.
Right. Now, I have a question. Is that portion, since that is on a state highway, is that considered part of the commercial district?
We don't have a commercial district.
Yeah, I believe we have one.
This commercial district listed in the zoning ordinance, but we don't have a designated commercial district.
Okay, we do have, it, it would seem that all the businesses that we have are pretty much located. Or I wouldn't say all the businesses, I'll, I'll say a lot of the businesses are, are located right along one twenty-three, one twenty-four. Alright, turnpike right.
Yeah, it's kind of like an organic commercial, like it organically has morphed into this.
Right, yeah, okay. And that's because of its ease of access and everything else going there. So. This does not address that because the complaint there is that um you need to get a variance because that's a residential area.
But it is.
But it is.
Every property in town is considered residential.
I think where you're going with it, because of the noise and different elements of one twenty-four.
Traffic.
Traffic, yeah, so with the whole things a little bit, yeah.
Jake breaks coming downhill.
There's more noise there inherently.
Yeah, but I'm not even talking about noise. I'm just talking about um this guy has a, a commercial truck operation.
I wouldn't call it a commercial truck operation, but.
But he registered as a company and it is a transport company. Granted, that is his residency um at this time, or I don't know, maybe the house isn't fixed enough enough to be a residency. But um you know, he's using it by his admission. That he comes home on the weekends, parks his truck and then leaves again on Monday morning. Comes home Friday night, leaves again Monday morning.
Yeah.
My question is if, if, that we are going to consider that as a commercial operation that requires a variance. Would we have to enforce looking at our um. Motor vehicle registrations and see how many trucks there are that fit that same type of description? And get them to all have to convert theirs into a, a variance also?
Well, and that's part of the, the struggle and what Jason's been speaking about periodically this evening is not being able to deliver relief or justice equally. Uh because it's only, it's almost like we're encouraging people complaining about each other. Uh so that we can go out and check it and then stamp it that it's okay. You know, like, oh, just come in and talk to us and then we'll, alright, you're good. Like what was the point to all of that? Like that whole.
And, and it's not a, it's not a free service that we offer. Like this, this encourages cost to people to come in. They pay for all the registered mailings, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then they take time out of their lives. Who wants to put a number on that one?
Alright.
You want them?
Oh, yeah. And it's, and it's treated with no value, yeah.
It's precious time. Yeah, so this is, it's, that's why I said in the very beginning, this, I think this is really a place where. The constitution is coming into play, like where are your rights?
Yeah.
Where is your freedom? Um I would like to see the zoning ordinances and the planning board ordinances. And then another stack of all the state. And I'd like to see what we have brought on ourselves, right? It would make for an interesting visual here, so. Assistant. I'm kidding. I think the bookshelf kind of gives that illustration right there of what we're up against.
I mean, yeah, I mean, just all over this town, there are people that park their.
Commercial vehicles in their driveway overnight.
Yeah, commercial vehicles on the driveway.
No, it is, it is not.
Now, New Hampshire doesn't really have a, a separate commercial vehicle license plate like um, like Massachusetts does.
Yeah, we do. Yes, we do. We have commercial works.
No, but like even for a minivan?
If it's using, if um, it depends on what it's being used for.
Wouldn't it depend on the.
So, so it depends on what size business it is, what, there's so many things that go into that.
But I think what you're maybe driving at, Massachusetts requires you to get a license to operate a business. Like you need a business license, right?
You need one here in New Hampshire.
Yeah, New Hampshire does too. Depends on what kind of business it is.
A business license?
And, and this particular address, he does have a registered business license for it.
But he's. Or I don't, do I keep my mouth shut? Do I say?
Yeah, if you, if you wish to.
Say something?
Your job here is um taking minutes and seeing what kind of decisions we come up with.
Okay.
But if you wish to, I have no objection to hearing what your thoughts are, so.
I feel like, well, I don't, I mean, the zoning ordinances, if you're running a particular type of business out of your property. Then you need a, a variance or if you have people coming and going is always the way it was explained to me.
And that's one of the, that is one of the, the steps there.
Which.
And you have to ensure that you've got a, a parking specification.
He has, you have a registered business from your house. I have one from my house. I don't know, but there's so many people in town that have registered businesses with the state of New Hampshire and they're pro, on their, for their home address. Cause like Danielle Sickles said last week, you have to, or two weeks ago, you have to have. An, a, a physical address. You can't use a PO box. So even if you're just doing your books for your personal business. But you're, you know, you have a, a work truck in your yard. You're doing HVAC or electrical or plumbing. And you're using part of your house as an office. So you, you're putting down your home address. But you go to work every day, you come home every day. You don't have people coming in and looking at your showroom or you're not selling anything out of your property or. You know, having a restaurant or, you know, all the other things that you would need a special exception or a variance for. Like if you're just parking your work truck at your property. I don't believe that that's a requirement for, to go, because everyone in town would have to do that.
Right.
Well, that's where we're getting into. Well, that's where we're getting into.
Yeah.
This gray area, the difference with this property is that it's very much.
Front and center.
In view, um.
Right.
And there's more going on than just one element, but I believe all we're reviewing is the the zoning,
Right.
like the business element to this whole.
Is he running a business?
And trying to determine if he's actually running a business, is he moving material there, like with the trucks?
Right.
I don't know, like I even drove back by many times just to, and really looked at it. But it came to that point of with that trailer parked there, it seems, you know, semi-permanent.
Right.
You know, even has like little dirt ramp built up to the back for easy access, but then I was like, well, what if it's just storage? And then when I went back and reviewed the minutes from zoning, he says it's for storage, uh thing, like furniture or something.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause he's renovating his house.
Plenty of people that have those cargo containers, even in.
Yeah.
How's it going?
Good area, but uh cargo containers that they will buy and, you know, just put on their property, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So it's not much different than that, and then even so,
Right.
the fact that it's on wheels may make it exempt from other elements of structure.
Right. Right, being taxed on it or assessed for it, yeah.
And that's a job for the assessors, not for us.
Yeah.
Right. Right.
And and I hazard to think that they found the fact that it wasn't an area that that could be addressed.
Right.
Yeah, or it would be uh being addressed, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, didn't get much clarity in it, but another one where I could see, you know, where enforcement could be used or discretion could be used. It just, it didn't, it's not clear to me, and so I.
Can I read your name, sorry?
Neil Bogard.
Thank you.
How's it going?
Good.
Good.
Could I make one statement as the Z B A clerk?
Sure.
Um just my my understanding from talking to the chair is that the reason why they feel like it needs a variance is because um like when you have your businesses at your home, they're usually inside. So the reason why it's making an impact is because his trucks are outside. So because they're outside, that's why I feel like, because like, yeah, if he was just having his trucking business inside and and he didn't have a truck parked outside, there would be no issue, but because the trucks parked outside, it's visible, that's the impact.
But there's a lot of trucks parked inside, a lot of.
That is just what I was told, what I asked, the reason why.
Yeah, and then, that's that one part where you can see it, yeah.
Yeah.
That that's, that was the only reason why in in their, in Walker's plan that it needed a special exemption was because it's not, the the small business he has isn't just inside, it's now visible outside as well, and that's.
Because it's in flames.
This has been.
That's the impact.
This has been brought up to us that um and goes back to what I was saying earlier about equal justice. Um it's impossible, we've been told, don't go looking for it, don't fly drones over people's properties.
Right. Right. Right.
Um and yet at the same time.
Right.
Here we are.
But what's the difference?
And to go after this one semi-truck in town, as Debbie said, I know of at least two more.
Me too.
What do I, what am I supposed to do with this?
Right, so do you have those other people, cause they're parking their eighteen wheeler?
And what if somebody drives? And and how do we do this, now we have to determine, is this an employee, say for another, another D P W that took a plow truck home?
Right.
All winter long because their route is a bordering town?
Right.
And now is that considered?
Right.
Are are we allowing, say, Jeffrey to use, you know what I mean?
Or even the street.
Or am I getting too convoluted?
A little convoluted.
A little convoluted?
But I see what you're saying.
Kind of followed it, yeah, yeah.
But there's other eighteen wheelers that people have, you know, they, that's their job, they long haul or whatever. Is it a business running out of your house because you're parking your eighteen wheeler in your yard?
Yeah.
You know?
And so, yeah, forget the other towns, um if you're a contract, uh.
Yeah. Right.
An employee of a trucking company.
Right.
Is more what I was getting.
There, there you go, that's apples to apples, yeah.
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 Yeah, so now.
Yeah, how many people do we have that are carpenters, um?
Countless.
Electricians?
Countless.
Not countless, cause we only have five thousand people in town, a lot.
Right, a lot.
There's a lot.
Forty-five, forty-five hundred.
And it's a huge part of our tax base.
Right.
This is the thing.
Yeah.
And the thing there is that, you know, at what point do you consider a truck to be a commercial vehicle being used for the business? Well, it is for just all the craftsmen that we have here in this town.
Right.
Mm-hmm. So, without further ado, is there any um motion regarding this? You know, to either place a cease and desist or stop order, work order um on that property?
No, I I think what, before we go to that, I think what's brought a lot of attention to that particular property is, like you said, the visibility of everything, plus all the other work that was going on.
Mm-hmm.
Um which was um raising a lot of questions, let's, we'll say it nicely.
But is that for the business or is that for, you know what I'm saying?
No, it's not for his business, because it's.
If you're, if you're, right.
Cause it's almost like that element of business is being leveraged in order to start this whole other cascade of events.
Exactly. Yes.
Correct.
Which would get zoning, planning, everybody's gonna be on that property and like finding out exactly what he's doing on that, on his property.
Right.
One really, it's not anybody's business.
Right.
To some degree.
I don't know, if I'm gonna dig up my backyard, I can.
Yeah.
So how do we word this motion?
No, there's, there's either.
There's one aspect of it, is that in a rural district or a village?
Rural.
What's that?
Those properties in rural districts.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's rural.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that other sheet, the reason that the village district is highlighted is cause it's referenced down in the rural, because it says that everything that's allowed for in the village districts are.
Allowed in.
Allowed for in the rural.
Kind of rural district, yeah.
Yeah.
And then if you go down further, like it goes into um what you'd need a um special exception for, which number four is just simply business.
Okay.
So question, if you, if you make a motion to do a cease and desist or whatever you may choose to do, what happens with the alike business a mile down the road?
Right.
If that does the same thing, what what's good, what's the game plan if you make a motion to do a cease and desist on the property we're speaking of, and then they come back and throw, well, so and so does it a mile down the road?
So, so at that point where they say so and so does does it a mile down the road?
Right, what's the game plan?
Well, then we have to look at that, and then if that person.
Which has been in place a lot longer than the property has been.
And then, and then if somebody else complains about more, then we have to look at those, so what we're doing is generating a three-one-one scenario. You know, like, call us and like, tell us everything that you see, but the fact of the matter is that this town office isn't built like that.
Right.
This has never been, from my recollection, an authoritative, like, we're gonna go out and just start hammering the whole community and um finding them, you know, like that's hasn't been the tone.
Right.
But for whatever reason, there's this outside shift where more and more we find people coming into this office and coming to us, trying, like, asking us to help solve their neighbor dispute because they can't get along with their neighbors, or they're not talking to each other, the neighbors, and they don't know what's going on on one person's property, so based off of what they can see, it's in question and you guys need to go look, go look at it, you know, send somebody out there.
Where's the cutoff on the village district versus rural right there?
Uh, I'm not sure exactly.
It starts partway down Bank Village. Like, partway.
But then we have the center town.
Yeah.
Oh, right, that's right too.
That's what I was wondering about.
Yeah, but it's not extended to.
In fairness though, Sean, there is a place for it. You know, and there needs to be recourse for somebody whose neighbor is just absolutely violating them.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, yeah, we have, we have.
There you go, you're starting a rulebook.
No, no, no.
No, I know, it's just, yeah, I don't know, yeah.
I get both sides and it's really, it is difficult, and I think when I ran for this position or put my name in the hat, cause there wasn't anyone running against me, I don't think.
Wait, you, you.
I'd love to. No, but I thought, I just wanna do my part to try and help preserve how this town, the character and how this town operates, it's a unique town. There's a lot going on with that. And a lot of um gets and flags in this town. This has really, these last couple of weeks have been a real challenge on it. And I don't know where we go, you need law, without law, it's horrible. I know people across the world, like in Africa, um and they tell me, you avoid anarchy at all costs because they've lived it, and it's brutal, absolutely brutal.
Yeah.
So, there's a whole.
So.
The whole thing here, and yeah.
Without making any decision to use any one of those enforcement tools is gonna trigger another element where where this 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 non-decision or decision to not uh do that is going to be called the question.
Yeah.
So, are you guys comfortable?
It's possible for a superior court.
Yeah, so are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to look at our legal budget.
No, you don't.
I would think it would be worth the risk.
Yeah.
Well.
Well, some do, some don't, yeah.
I mean, it does come.
Um but.
Yeah, we're going to have people complain.
Hmm, either way.
But. But.
As we saw tonight, we off- offered that stop work order, and there's, and it, and it's not a fault of the complaints or the one who came and complained about our stop work order.
Mm-hmm.
It's the way the system goes, right?
Yes.
And it's to be expected.
And that one was uh more clear, you know, for me anyways, than this one is. Alright, so our official uh decision is to not issue a stop work order or a cease and desist on four forty-five turnpike.
And we make a motion and vote on it. Yeah?
Fire it off.
Make a motion not to issue a cease and desist order for four forty-five turnpike based on section N of the code in four.
Zoning.
Zoning code. Properly worded?
Yeah, you have to, to, probably more than just section N.
Okay.
So it's actually part of um.
Section N or M?
Mike. Can can we get it, yeah, I'd like to have it referred to, um what is it, minimum? All I see here, all I see here is section M.
On occupation.
Yeah, um, minimal impact home occupation.
Yeah.
Section N is your mic.
So, motion to not to issue a cease and desist or a stop work order? You didn't say that.
That is what I said, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So, just wanted to point out that in referencing um section N, uh number one, the activity shall be carried out only by the residents of the premise. Number two, the activity shall be operated entirely within the dwelling unit or an accessory structure. Three, there should be no external evidence of the activity except for a non-illuminated sign when it continues. So, and that's that point that Jennifer had spoke to uh earlier, is that it's not within that dwelling unit or an accessory building.
What does she, what do you mean by that?
It's not contained, the activity, like the coming and going of the truck isn't contained in a, like a shed or a barn, per se.
But nobody's is.
It's outside, no, I know, I'm just, so I was going to look for an amendment.
But I would say that the business, the running of the business is is not.
It's just parking the truck.
Is not taking place in that truck, it's taking place in his den, inside the dwelling.
Or in Pennsylvania, where it's addressed to.
Okay, that's, that's for clarity.
His living room. Yeah, that's how I would interpret that.
Yeah.
I can't imagine, I think it's against the law to be doing business as you're driving.
Yeah, yeah.
And he can, to park his truck is something that's, everybody does. We don't all have an eighteen wheeler.
Okay.
Right.
Any further discussion?
Any discussion from the, from the public?
Oh, it's, it's, this one's for us, Lou. Uh, hearing none, uh, all those in favor, say aye, aye.
You seconded it. I said you seconded it, did you vote?
Yeah, I just said aye.
You said aye, I I doubled I and raised my hand. Well, messed up for the school board committee thing. Alright, so then we're um, I'd like to get that, a decision letter uh sent out to everyone involved in that situation, so if they have something to go on.
To Earl, Tim, Jim, property owner. Zoning board?
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
We can probably, yeah, planning too, cause they would have been a part of.
Okay. Okay?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
I'll get right on that.
Yeah, alright. So, Mr. Bogard.
Did you see that?
Yes, sir.
What brings you in this evening?
I'm just sitting in, listening and seeing if there's anything that might come up that I might wanna chime in on.
Yeah, well, we spoke about uh that end of Timbertop.
Yes.
Uh, earlier.
In reference to.
The icing, yeah, the drainage.
The drainage issue, yeah. Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna look for clarity um on the timeframe that was given, uh, cause that's not known by this board right now.
Yep.
So that, I just wanna let you know that that was brought up.
Okay.
Did you have anything further?
Uh, well, I mean, always something to discuss, I, I'm, I'm looking to gain some knowledge on the policies, procedures for the Public Works Department pertaining to winter operations, um their protocol, how they go about doing it, um as well as um their M U T C D plan, ten-year plan for their M U T C D.
What's M U T C D?
Manual Uniform Traffic Control Device Manual, set by the feds. So I'm looking to see if we have a plan implemented to start addressing that, and if we're budgeting for it properly.
Do you know what that entails?
A lot.
No, no, I mean, like, what did, what did, you said the.
Signage, street markings.
And you're referencing the federal law?
Particularly. Yeah, M U T C D is the manual that is put out by the federals.
And this is not something new, this is.
No, old, no, correct.
M U T C E?
M U T C D, you can gain a lot of knowledge from U N H, you can download the manual online. Um, it pretty much spells out all the regs. Um, I forgot all about the meeting tonight, otherwise I would have brought some more information, but there's certain timelines where certain things that pertain to M U T C D are supposed to be met.
So you're talking about signage, where it's.
Signage, street, street markings.
Is that the one that dictates the um dimensions and.
Dimensions, retroreflectivity.
And everything for, depending on the the type of traffic that's going on there.
Correct, correct.
I know, I know what you're talking about, I've got a copy of that, yeah.
It's a pretty entailed book.
It is. I just never heard of it.
There's nothing every day.
Heard as M U T C E, I just.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
What have you heard of, heard of it as?
I, I read about a third of it, and then I got sent off to Switzerland for a year and a half.
Can you um send me an email and I can forward it to the D P W director to see what is in place for that?
I can. I can.
Okay. Okay.
I figured we got some new blood in here, so why don't we try to get on the rails and get things rolling in the right direction, it's been a long time since we've had new blood, not saying that it wasn't going in the right direction, but I don't think it's where it could be. As far as the progress grows of the infrastructure of the town.
Okay.
Cool.
Alright, anything else?
Not yet.
That's a good starter.
Yeah, let's start with that.
Sounds pretty comprehensive, yeah.
Start with that.
Hey, thanks.
Yeah, let's start with that.
I'll have vacation tomorrow. Just.
It's not gonna happen overnight, I promise.
No, definitely not. Okay.
Um, also, since we're on the topic of uh fun things, um, in regards to um, the mobile sign. I, the sign company re, what's that?
Is this round table? Is this round table?
Yeah, it's round table, it is, it's round table time too.
Okay. Okay.
Um, the sign company had reached out again and resent everything that I had forwarded uh to you all before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I asked why, and it was cause he hadn't heard anything yet. Um, so I called Gary just to check in and find out if there was something else that had come up, you know, which would have prohibited him from um issuing that permit, and he said, no, it was just slipped through the cracks and he had meant to do it, um, and that he could get it done right away. Uh, but I decided to take a pause on it just to make sure, uh, cause he did seem a little apprehensive, um, about it.
So the size of it was resolved, cause I thought there was an issue with the size.
So.
Can I?
From, yeah, just from what I understand, it's that toggling element of the sign is what's in question, I think.
Actually, it goes further back.
Is it further?
Yeah, because what happened, to give you a bit of a history, there used to be a, a sign at the beginning where they just had the white letters that they had to, and numbers that they had to change manually. And then, um, the sign in two thousand nineteen, the current sign went up. And what they're saying is that that sign was um, uh, was not legal at the time uh that it was put on, and it, it was non-conforming, is, is the term. And now that they're, and what they wanted to do is to try and make the sign people apply for a variance to make that sign that's up, currently up there, um, get a variance for it because it is initially non-conforming. And then, they're going to have to go for another variance with the new sign, because the new sign's going to have a toggle on it which will give you a price that if you're paying with a, a credit card, or a price if you're paying cash.
But the argument was that they had an approved building permit for the original one.
But the original, you're absolutely right, the original one had an approved building permit.
The twenty nineteen one?
The twenty nineteen, yes, and uh they, the argument that I led that, was that if it had a building permit, then it was already approved because uh you, to be installed simply because the building permit supersedes um all other things. The, they argued at that point, and argument got uh quite vocal even going into, after the meeting and that um, one comment was made by one member that maybe I shouldn't be a part of the um, of the zoning board if I was trying to fight for that. And I just said, because they didn't believe that um, that the, uh, unapproved building permit was proof that everything was okay, cause if you're gonna build a house or do anything, and you have a building per, and it went through all the steps to get a building permit, that's an assumption that it meets all the regulations or everything that's necessary to, to start that, then probably.
Like it should have been declined if.
That's correct.
Like it was this time.
So this time they declined it because this one was going to be even more non-conforming than the twenty nineteen. So that was their little war call, was non-conforming and more non-conforming. And so, that's where it's left right now.
So there is a.
Now, but, the one thing, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but the one thing that happened is that um, the guy who was uh presenting it showed that, that they did have the um, the building permit. And he also quoted a couple of um, state cases. And I could probably call them up and send them to you so you can review them, where it was a very similar type of argument and they um, and when it went to Superior Court, Court or whatever next courts are, are, that they were um automatically approved. Because it was a continuance of technology, and you can't stop a sign from go, from changing uh when they tried to introduce new technology in there.
Interesting, but.
I believe that was something that he had supplied as well, um, that forwarded along with everything too, so.
Yeah, I think that he quoted two or three different cases.
Yeah, yeah. But it did seem like that there was some precedence in the state, um, and um, there's probably more right along that line of thinking of previously permitted, um, and then also that um, finding out more and more, it seems like the state court systems are pushing back against the small towns ordinances um inhibiting uh progression of technology, building, um, and infrastructure.
What do you base that on?
Just, all the conversations that we have and, you know, things that I hear um at the different training sessions and a lot of, you know, the reasoning that we use here, um, at this, you know, as this board is right along lines of, you know, people's individual property rights, um, the necessity for uh commercial businesses, you know, in reference like the low limits aspect, um, and there are just countless, you know, examples of when it gets brought to court, they side against the town.
They, they usually, they're siding toward progress in business, not necessarily the town, but.
Yeah.
And as this, this sign issue right now, there's nothing actionable for us.
I just wanted to make sure, it was just a double check, since had the opportunity, just to make sure that this is another scenario where this may or will be questioned.
Along with the Appleton School Museum.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's a very similar situation where a permit was, well, we didn't see a signed permit, but we saw a per, permit.
Yeah.
Building permit that spelled out what their use, intended uses were, and so. And this is what we had earlier.
No, I know.
Where we had someone say that the building inspector said.
But it's not in writing.
He said, that, that one wasn't in writing, yeah.
And, and it also goes in, you know, the other one that came up similar to, and Debbie supplied a whole bunch of documentation, which I've read more copies of, was the museum over at the, the Appleton Academy.
Yeah.
And that brings a smile to your face, doesn't it?
No, you just said that, that's why I was smiling.
Yeah.
Andrew.
And, um, and, you know, they were, they were fighting that, um, that even though it had a, um, I, I think you have the document from eighteen fifty, which you, um, you gave them.
Well, I don't wanna keep going down too far with the, like, the museum aspect.
Yeah, but anyway, so it's one of those that.
So you guys are fine with it being issued, the, yeah, the building permit for the sign?
The sign.
Yeah.
Just though reaffirmed that decision that we had made a couple of weeks ago.
And, and a lot of this, a lot of this um leave up to the code enforcement officer to, with his discretion. We don't get every single application.
No, no.
So I, I do, and based on what I've heard, I would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought they were kind of intruding on, on an area outside of what the CBA should be doing.
Okay, alright, yeah, so I'll let uh Gary know then, to move forward with that.
Sorry.
Alright, so is there anything um pressing that you guys uh need to bring up this evening, before we go into non-public?
Yeah, warrant articles.
Yeah.
And budget.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, but.
So, and, yeah, along those lines, um, Debbie, last night we were speaking about, so we'll be meeting with the FAC on Monday.
Okay, I'll, I'll post that.
Yeah.
I'll add the, so should I post it as a second, like a selectmen, so the FAC has their own agenda and then I'll post you?
No, just make sure that it's clear on the FAC.
Or can I add for the selectmen with the FAC?
Correct, yeah, that's gonna.
I think that's the right way to do it, if they're presenting to us, then make sure that everyone knows, we'll be there.
Okay. Okay.
And, once we're there and it's posted, we can legally make decisions.
Yeah.
At these meetings, so it's a good thing for us.
Okay.
Uh, then I'll, as well, uh Tuesday evening, to have the FAC come at seven to meet with us, cause we have to start doubling up, um,
Okay.
You know, in some dialogue with Debbie that I had, we have basically three weeks to get this thing
Yeah.
ready and prepared in order to be ready in time for our uh public hearing, um, in January, so.
Yeah.
We have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, before Christmas, yeah, yeah.
Behind the eight ball. Speaking of Christmas.
No, no squirrel moments right now.
It's not my turn to run to. Nobody waiting for him.
No, I'm still on um, the budget.
Sir.
So there are some jet, some suggestions um from the FAC, you know, for those departments, um, for Tuesday night.
For what departments?
Uh, I don't recall offhand, but it's in uh the minutes from, or the, or the posting from the meeting last night.
Okay.
Yeah. Town office, parks and rec.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So would they try to tell these people that they need, these department has, they need to be there, or?
Yes, yeah.
Not me?
No, no, yeah, they take care of all that, yeah.
Okay. Making sure, don't wanna drop a ball again.
And then, as well, the following week, um, I think we'll probably do uh Monday, Tuesday as well, if you guys are fine with that, or.
So the eleventh and the eighteenth?
Yeah.
So twelve.
And then essentially the meeting on the nineteenth, um, that's gonna be one of the ones that we got, it's gonna be crush time.
We're just gonna have hammer on the budget.
Yeah, yeah, so it's gonna, no matter how long it takes, so keep that in mind over the next, you know, couple of weeks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the discussions to try to, you know, we gotta move through it to some degree and try to do as much, um,
Work on, work on each one as much as possible while it's here.
Review. Yeah, while it's here and then even ahead of the meeting, you know, come loaded with questions.
And I'll be learning how to enter the budget into the new system.
Excellent.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, warrant articles will be uh next week, next Tuesday.
That's it, it's all I'm putting on the agenda, just warrant articles, not adding anything else.
Alright.
Cause we have to do it, we've put it off six weeks in a row.
When is it, when is it, six weeks?
We've been putting it off, yeah.
We had brief discussions here and there.
Very brief.
Yeah.
Time goes by fast. Alright, so Jason?
Uh, just wanna make an observation, um, budget committee would sure be nice.
We wouldn't be in this bind, there'd be a whole other group of doing, people doing this.
Yeah.
That's it.
Lou?
Nothing.
Debbie?
I'm not saying anything.
So we're about to go into non-public gym, but just to let you know, uh, that we had decided not to issue any type of stop work order or cease and desist on four forty-five turnpike.
No enforcement.
No enforcement.
Okay.
Yeah. And you'll be getting a letter.
Was that unanimous decision?
There was unanimous.
Okay.
And it was based on code.
Hmm?
It was based on the code, the zoning code.
Okay.
Or cited, at least.
And I will send you a letter.
Our interpretation of it.
In writing.
We'll get it in writing?
Yes.
Okay, with the rationale?
Yeah, and a copy of the minutes.
Okay, that would be fine. I, but I gave it here because I, the Board of Assessors has two warrant articles that they would like you to put in. Okay, uh, one of them is the old article ten, and the other one was what we talked about today.
Okay.
Okay, and, 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 but they don't affect the tax rate.
Right.
Cause the only money they take is from a capital reserve account, so they have no effect on the tax rate, but we can have you, we can get you the articles that we're looking at by next week.
So you're gonna write them up and send them to me?
Yeah, the only thing I can't do is on, on your article ten, I can't put a number in, cause I don't know what I'm taking out, because I'm, I'm gonna clean it out, because this is the cleanout year, but I don't know how much is in there, and I won't know until after.
Right. Why do we not know what is in there? Oh, cause we gotta fix a couple of times.
I wanna know what the end of the year is, I can't know the end of the year until I get about ten days into January.
Gotcha.
But the tax is all there, you just gotta put the number in.
Right, got it.
Alright.
I have one last question for you, uh, where do we stand with employees for DPW? And what is the game plan if we get a snowstorm with lack of employees?
It's my understanding that there's a driver for each truck.
Are they an employee of the town, or are they a subcontractor?
Pretty sure he has a driver for each dump truck as an employee, is this correct, Debbie, cause?
And then there are a few employees that um help plow.
Seasonally.
Seasonal, they're only.
So everyone that's gonna be plowing in a town vehicle is a town employee?
Oh, in a town vehicle, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Some, we do have.
How many subcontractors do we have coming in with their own vehicles?
He has a list, and that is gonna depend on the storm.
Yeah.
Okay.
And who's available.
Do we know those rates offhand that they're getting paid for the subcontractors?
I don't.
Not off the top of my head. Add that to your email.
Doesn't sound like we have a very good plan.
Well, Peter does, we don't, so just add that to your email, and I'll let you know how much it is.
Okay, interesting that a director doesn't keep the selectmen abreast on his action plan.
Well.
Us- utilizing outside people to plow town roads, that's interesting to me.
We, we are aware, but off the top of our head, we're not, I could go beyond.
We're not, we're.
We can't memorize everything.
Well, it's, it's, uh, the reason I ask is like, I know we're down, we're, we're down, we're hurting.
Yeah. Right.
Um, and public safety is at risk if you don't have a plan implemented.
Yeah, there is.
To implement, so I'm just trying to wrap my head around what that plan is.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, there are plenty of people to call for snow emergencies to plow.
Okay.
We just need to, I just don't know the dollar amounts off the top of my head, or how many there are.
Cause I've heard that there's subcontractors utilizing town equipment, and I don't know if Primex would really care for that.
No. To my knowledge, the only people allowed to drive town equipment are town employees.
Of the DPW? Because I've heard that there's firefighters that are utilizing town equipment during storms.
But they're on, they're on the DPW payroll, at that point, that's our seasonal, hell, okay?
Right, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because.
Part-time.
And then everyone's drug tested and DOT physical prior to being hired?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, I do not.
It's important enough.
Yep, it is.
Yeah. Alright, last call, roundtable stuff. Hearing nothing, um, uh. Hearing nothing, uh, uh, thank you, Ron, uh, for your continued dedication and help in recording these meetings and getting them posted online. Uh, thank you to everybody that's taken part in this meeting. Uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A three-two-C personnel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.